Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona-Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Burke O'Beale.
Yes.
Mrs. Shonar.
Here.
Mr. Mandela.
Here.
Mrs. Dye.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments, for items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody this evening?
Good.
Glad to hear it.
Very crowded.
I know, absolutely. Well, first, I just want to congratulate Mr. Shonar on your recent election to the board and to Mr. Valero, who's sitting out there eagerly awaiting his seat up here. So congratulations to both of you. We look forward to having you, and obviously, we will miss Mrs. Burke. She's been here a long time, but we'll get to that in a couple of weeks. But anyway, committee reports. I heard that Mr. Mandela has a heck of a report for us.
I actually have two reports. One, just a quick one, we met with, for negotiations, teachers last night, and things have already started and, you know, we're moving along already. We have future dates already scheduled, so that was a nice, we're starting real early this year, so that was last night. I actually attended the South End FSA meeting. That was the first time I've been there in a long time. A lot of new faces, a lot of things going on. One thing that was, I don't know if it was at both North End and South End, but one thing they did that I thought was really cool for anti-bullying, they had a day, and if I speak it correctly, I don't have all my notes with me here, so I think I have it by memory, though. They had one day set aside at a certain time during the day where all the classrooms actually did this same program, and that included also the special teachers, the, you know, music teachers and art teacher, and everyone did it at the exact same time, and they had this imaginary character, not imaginary, they had a character at a paper, I forgot what the character's name was, and the kids had to go, the students had to go up and write really hurtful things on the character. And, you know, they could put whatever they want, call any names they want, and they would go up there and do that. And then, at the end, they had to go up and remove what they wrote on the character. And obviously, you can't remove what you wrote. And what the lesson was is to, your words, you can never take back what you've said to someone, and that they stick, and to think about it because, once you say it, it's there, even if you say you're sorry, yes, that helps, but those words can really affect someone and stay with them. So it was pretty amazing, and, you know, I'm giving you the quick version, but to have that throughout the whole day, I mean, at the same time, and then they all discussed it and they talked about things, so it was a pretty, did I miss?
Yeah, they wouldn't, like, hire me, they talked about how they wanted to have just very coordinated bullying agenda with all universally throughout.
It was very effective, very, very effective. So I thought that was pretty neat. The one, the thing that really stood out with me along with that is, I don't know if anyone heard in the district, how many heard, but we are going to have Academy Award-winning off-actress, but that's also an author here at South End on December 8th to promote her series.
Strawberry Fecal Face.
Strawberry Fecal Face?
Yeah.
And it's Julianne Moore is coming to South End School on December 8th. So I thought that was pretty exciting for that to be occurring. And then, lastly, I forget the date, maybe you know the date, but they start passing the word, they're having a beefsteak, I believe it's in January, but more to come on that. They didn't have all the details, but they will be having a beefsteak as their fundraiser. So that was pretty much at South End.
That's great, thanks.
I went up to the high school. Actually, Mr. Mandela and I switched because he had a meeting, so we took South End, I took the high school, we just switched. And really, it was quite a short meeting with the APT. They just kind of went over what they're doing right now. The biggest thing is only 150 families in the high school have signed up for the APT, and we'd like to have that ratio a lot higher. There's about maybe 450 families maybe in the high school, and so only 150 have signed up. It's only $20, and they really would like some of the other families to please sign up, and so we're going to kind of get the word out on that a little bit more. Other than that, they discussed project graduation a little bit more. They also discussed some of the events that are going to be going on at the high school. It was a very, quite short meeting.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, I attended the middle school FSA meeting last week. Mr. Chell gave an update on the greenhouse, because they have the courtyard area, and they are planting fig trees, basil tomatoes, and they're going to plant pumpkin seeds to see what's going to happen. Math scores were mailed home, everybody should receive those. He gave us an update on Eagle's Landing, which is where I believe the eighth grade trip is going to be instead of Rocking Horse Ranch. They were very impressed with it. There's a lot more to do, I guess, there if it rains. It's closer to Cedar Grove, it's only 45 minutes versus upwards of an hour and 45 minutes if there's traffic to Rocking Horse. And one of the big cells is that it's just our school that's there for the day versus, you know, however many other schools might be at Rocking Horse Ranch. So that was kind of exciting. Conference dates, this week and next week. Bryan Story, which was, which they had a couple of weeks ago, was very well received by the student population. Let's see, the market period ends on the 18th, and the next meeting isn't until January 23rd, so.
Wow.
Yeah. The middle school recently switched, they're doing their FSA meetings every other month now, so, which is nice, so.
I guess everyone is except the high school, right?
High school still, yeah, it's monthly every month.
And South End moved to it every other month, too?
It's actually quite fast. I mean, it wasn't that, they just went through the list of things they need for those, stuff like that.
They usually have like a graduation meeting right after that, right? I mean, that's where a lot.
Last night they did.
Okay.
Last night it was just very, you know, I don't say it was a real quick meeting, but it was a pretty quick meeting. They just did what they needed to do.
Great, all right. All right, moving on, we have some board presentations. I think we'll do the first one with Mr. Knopka and the Washington DC trip.
All right, how we doing, everyone? My name's Mike Knopka, I'm the teacher of the AP United States Government and Politics as well as the AP United States History course at Cedar Grove High School, and I'm here to present our sixth consecutive annual class trip to Washington DC. As far as who's going to be attending on this trip, like I said, I teach the history course and the government and politics course. We also include the AP Economics students, we offer them the opportunity to travel with us. This particular year, we have 26 students who demonstrated interest. I've already sent out, you know, cost expectations to give them an idea. A lot of students also participate in spring sports and other after-school activities that might conflict with it. So this is the feedback we've gotten, 26 students plus three chaperones, which would be myself, Mr. Gallagher, and Ms. Jessalbecio. Like I said, it's our sixth consecutive year doing this trip, and every single year, I feel like we're finding something new and great about the city of Washington DC that we haven't done in the past, and I never get bored of it. Six consecutive years going, there is always something new that we haven't done yet to see. So when will this trip be taking place? We have it scheduled for May 12th, the Friday, through Tuesday, May 16th. Typically, in the past, we've done it a week later, usually always while it's after the AP exams have taken place. This particular year, the following weekend trip, like sometimes there's conventions going on in Washington DC that makes like hotels impossible to get, or the cost would be exorbitant, so we don't go there. So with this date on Friday, May 16th, the AP History as well as the AP Government and Politics classes have already taken their exams on that Friday morning. The AP Economics class has one more exam to take in the morning. So the way we're proposing to do this is, when it comes to travel, we travel down by Amtrak through Newark-Penn Station, down to Union Station in Washington DC. The one group that's not taking the AP Economics exam is going to be leaving early in the morning to get down there, and then Mr. Gallagher will be traveling with the remainder of, there's only like a handful of additional students who are in the AP Economics, who are not in the other classes, who will arrive later on in the afternoon down in Washington DC and meet us at that point in time. So from Amtrak, we go right to Wyandotte. The hotel choice we do is the Holiday Inn Washington Capital, which allows, we take the Amtrak to Union Station in DC, and then from there, you can get right on the metro, and it takes us one block away from the hotel. So when it comes to traveling and bringing the baggage and stuff, it's not that long of a walk. It's conveniently located to, you know, all the sights to see in Washington, right on the National Mall there, which I've got a map coming up here eventually, I'll show you. Estimated cost is somewhere around $500 per student, and that's to be paid entirely by the students and the chaperones, and that doesn't include meals or souvenirs, that's additional cost that the students will be responsible for. Here's our nice map I got for us. Okay, so the Holiday Inn Capital's down here, the National Mall, closely located in proximity of the Washington Monument. Down here's the United States Capitol, and again, within walking distance, which is key, which is, you know, for convenience, also cost savings to travel. Like, a lot of people sometimes stay outside of Washington, but then you got to pay for transportation back and forth, and that's time wasted not seeing stuff that you could be seeing otherwise. And by the end of the weekend, by the end of the trip, we will walk everywhere you see on this map. We cover a lot of miles. Typically, what the itinerary consists of, we travel to the White House. Last year, we were actually lucky enough to get inside the White House, and we got a tour of that. Congressman Frailingheisen has been really good with us. Every single year, we've gone down there, we've gotten into his congressional office, the kids get to like sit at his desk, and if he's not there present, he's busy on Capitol Hill. His staff has been very accommodating to us and have helped us out. A couple of years ago, we got to see Senator Booker in his office. We do all the other Supreme Court, Arlington National Cemetery, these are some of like the main itinerary items that we make mandatory. It's like, you know, we're going to Washington DC, this is something you should absolutely see if you're here. The archives, go see like the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and stuff like that. But beyond this, like I said, there's so many different interests, and we bring a few different chaperones so we can take the students to their points of interest in Washington DC. Like, some people want to go to an art museum, some people want to go to the natural history, the United States history, African-American history. There's so many different things in so little time, even being there four or five days, you can't possibly cover it all. But we try the best to meet the interests of the students, and we've had a lot of good times doing that. So I've put together a compilation of some of the photos from our trip last year, some of the sights we see. This here's World War II Memorial nighttime and daytime. A lot of these memorials, if you haven't been to Washington, highly recommend going to check them out at nighttime when a lot of the tourists are gone. And the lighting, it's really beautiful, and it's a sight to see and, you know, remember the fallen of World War II. The Marine Corps War Memorial, Iwo Jima, another good sight to see at nighttime. Vietnam Memorial, it's one of the most popular in Washington. A lot of these things, you know, it's one thing to be a history teacher, like we talk about all this stuff in the classroom, we learn about it, and you read the book, but it's another thing to go there and check out this wall and see the massive size and the names, and flip through the book and see how many there actually are. It really puts things in perspective, you know, it's sobering for anyone, regardless of your politics, to see a site like this. Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, another one of my must-see things in Washington DC. And you see this one, last year was a little bit rainier than it had been in the past, but these guys are out there no matter what, they're incredible, and they don't miss a beat, they don't miss a step, they're right on point, 21 steps, turn around, 21 seconds, back, 21 steps, right on the dot. It's incredible, it's the amount of time and, I don't know, effort they go into putting a display like that together. This is JFK. We got inside the White House down here, you see that cool picture? I actually, at the end of the tour inside the White House, got to hang out with the first dogs. They brought them out for all the civilians to pet while we were hanging out in the tour. Interesting part about that is, because like I'm the history nerd, like I was hanging about, like lagging behind the rest of the group, which had already gone through the tour, and they all missed it. So it was like me and like one other student who got to pet the dogs and then brag about it, and then put it on this to brag about it further. Capitol Tour, last year, they had some, in the rotunda, the, you know, the big piece in the middle of the Capitol Building, it was under construction, but it's still cool every time, and again, there's so much stuff that you might not even pay attention to or realize the first time, even going through it six times every time, like, oh, there's something cool I haven't seen yet. And these like statues and stuff, they get new statues dedicated from the states every once in a while, and you go see what New Jersey's statue is, and the kids really get a kick out of it. That's inside Congressman Frailingheisen's office and his staff member talking to the kids about the artifacts he's got hanging on the wall, because his, you know, great-grandfather served in the Senate, and he's got all, like his old desk and a bunch of different stuff that she can, and they're all knowledgeable about it, they can talk about it anytime. The Supreme Court, last year, we had some big Supreme Court decisions, there was a lot of energy around the Supreme Court, and you can go inside and they give lectures pretty much on a daily basis unless the court's in session, and they can talk about what's going on in the Supreme Court, which is an interesting time right now after the passing of Justice Antonin Scalia. You know, there's a lot of controversy around the court, and that had a lot to do with the recent election, and the kids get a kick out of that because we talk about all those court cases in the class also. Washington Monument, we got to the top, the views there are pretty incredible. If you haven't done that, highly recommend it. Lincoln Memorial, another, you know, famous thing to see there. Jefferson Memorial. We also do, I have a famous night tour where I take the kids out late at night, and we go, and yeah, you see it during the day, and then we go out and see everything again at night, and we, you know, walk for miles, and the next morning, they're complaining and they're tired and their legs are sore and whatever, but in the end, after the tears, they admit they, it was a worthwhile experience. Oh, last year was a cool thing we did for the first time, actually. We got to the Marine Corps, the Commandant's House there, and we got to see the silent drill platoon go through their routine, which there, you might have seen them at like halftime shows during like Super Bowl and stuff. They are incredible, these guys, they just drill for days, and they go out there and they don't look, and they're flipping the guns around, and they're marching perfectly in sync, you can't even tell anything's different, and I got a kick out of it anyway. It's something to see. Yeah, so I guess that's it. A little update for the new guys here who haven't seen our stuff in the past, I think it's a really great worthwhile trip. We've got students who've gone on this trip, who are now in school in Washington DC, who are inspired by this trip to go to DC, serving internships in the Capitol and in the White House. I think it's a great trip, very worthwhile for our students here. I guess I'll open it to questions.
I'm just curious, does everyone get themselves down to Penn Station?
Yeah, so me, Ms. Alvecio, Mr. Gallagher, we show up in advance, we have, we organize, we have several meetings before the actual trip date, and we organize carpooling, so they get basically dropped out on the curb, and we're just waiting there, like waving, we're here, we're good to go.
So two of you will go down with the first wave, and then Mr. Gallagher will go down with the last wave?
Right, for this particular trip, that's what the plan is, right?
It's great, thank you.
Thank you for doing this trip, it's awesome.
Absolutely. And for those who are here just to see Mr. Knopka's presentation, I don't think anybody will be offended if you want to kind of slip out quietly. It's totally fine. Exactly, I'm sure there's tons of homework, right, exactly. Right, I'm tired, I might slip out with you. Absolutely.
Don't go.
No, I'm kidding.
Well, they must really like you.
Absolutely not.
Oh, okay. Well, then I take it back, nobody can leave yet.
You can leave. All videos are.
Okay, our next presentation is Ms. Barbosa, and she's giving us a math and science update.
And we're going to start with this. We're going to start with this. I'm going to play a little video, and I'm not going to tell you why, you're just going All right, tell me some thoughts after watching that, anyone? Anything running through your head, yes?
The difference between the tall and short.
Anything else? Anything you're wondering about what you just saw?
Where's it coming from?
Where's it coming from? Okay. They threw the magic of videography, they're pouring soda, and they just had the sound effect, I guess you could say.
Your feet chose the same volume?
Gianna?
So the same liquid in both glasses?
Oh! I didn't plant that, by the way, I'm not even, I'm not joking. Is it the same liquid in, was anyone else honestly thinking that at all? Okay, right. So what I wanted to model is a little bit of the direction that we have wanted to go into over the last few years. Typically, when you see a math or a science classroom, there's a lot of show and tell. There's a, a traditional classroom would require students to do a lot of skill, drill, isolated skills, you move on from one section to the next. And there is, since I'm going to start this here, I wanted to put you basically in the shoes of some of our students in terms of what we're looking for, in terms of creating a different expectation for a math and science classroom. There is a math teacher, in a middle school math teacher in California named Dan Meyer, who has created these three-act lessons where students would watch a video and be part of the question. Too often, we do problem, 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 and then a week later, we get an application and a word problem, and the students are not connecting with the real-life type of scenario. And he said in a TED conversation, he said, in a TED presentation, he said, "Let the math serve the conversation." So what we are trying to do in terms of math and science is present students with an overarching real-life problem and have them be part of the question. Albert Einstein actually said that, let the students be part of the question and not just give it to them. Once you ask that question, and I didn't tell you, you just watched the video, what type of information do you think you would need mathematically to answer that question? Which one has more? What's a math? Anyone? Yes, yes? Volume, volume of the cups, that would require us to do a little bit of measurement, maybe radius and diameter and things like that. This type of scenario is intended to elicit information and assess students on what their previous knowledge is. In general, for math and science in Cedar Grove, we have been working towards moving from a traditional classroom to a student-centered classroom where the students are driving the bus. The instructor is no longer, we don't want the instructor to be someone who's just pouring information in the students' minds, we want the instructor to be a facilitator, and I guess I'm going to take this and walk over here. And we want the learner to go from passive to active. Well, what does that mean? This is Edgar Dale's cone of experience, and basically, if a student is sitting in your classroom and you're showing them a video, you're talking at them, they're only retaining 10 or 20% of the material. If you move all the way to active learning where they are doing, they're creating, they're designing, they're analyzing, they're critiquing, they're verbalizing, all of these things, which by the way, these terms show up in Common Core in math, language arts, and in the next-generation science standards, then the students are going to be part of the creative process, they're going to own what they discover, and they're going to retain it, and they're going to be able to transfer it and apply it to other things. So I really wanted to quickly describe this situation because it's the motivation behind some of the changes that we've made in Cedar Grove. And the biggest thing, and intentionally I did this, the name of this template is called Connections from Prezi, because we want to see math and science education as a whole from K to 12, not what's going on in the elementary school, what's going on in the middle school, what's going on in the high school. We want students to really feel like there is a cohesive K-12 journey. And so, how are we getting that done? K-5, we implement it Go Math, which is entirely written based on Common Core, and it, with Common Core, that little line should be X-ing out the Common Core standards, we have the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which I believe there is a difference of about 11 words. So Common Core is still here, it provides students a really good foundation and a good structure for math, and of course, the park is modeled after Common Core. So we are cognizant of all of these changes, and we are focusing on them in K-5. Last year, in November and January, we had two, we had parent workshops to help parents better understand the purpose and intention of Common Core, the direction that we want to go into in math and science, and a few ways that they could better help their students. And I know moving forward, especially now in the middle school, we are looking at some options to have even more parent communication. Next year, I want to plan a community math night that gets the whole town involved, some high school students as well. In terms of other support for our K-5 teachers, parents, and students, we have moved from iXL to MobiMax, which is more of a diagnostic program. It's going to help assess where students are and what standards they're hitting and which ones they're, they still need remediation for. And teachers are used, continuing to use Brain Pop and Go Noodle and Kahoots and other online platforms to engage students. And I think the biggest shift, and something that has received the most positive feedback, is Conquer Math. Conquer Math is the Math Professional Development Program that our K-5 and now our middle school teachers are attending. The owner and consultant Nancy Schultz is a dynamo. She is our guru, she is a go-to. I have personally learned so much from her, being a calculus teacher, wondering how I could help a first-grade teacher, I know the answer to that now. And every single teacher that goes to any workshop, their minds are blown, they are so impressed and amazed, and they call it the math spa because they walk out of there like it's been a life-changing opportunity. Last year, the K-5 teachers attended unwrapping Common Core Year One, this year, they're going to Year Two. The biggest idea that they have implemented in their classrooms, and I see it every time I go into a classroom, is the three stages of mathematical development. Concrete, student Concrete, students are experimenting with tangible objects, with manipulatives, with counters, with objects, and they are seeing the, the math in front of them. Stage two is pictorial, where they are transferring the pictures that they get in their mind onto paper and creating visual models and representations. Stage three is abstract. Stage three is what you would equate with your flashcards and your equations and your solving for x. This concept has been relayed over and over again to the K-5 teachers, and we are discussing it in middle school and at the high school as well, to prepare them for the different type of student that we're cultivating in Cedar Grove. Over the summer, we worked on enrichment binders and we reorganized the presentation of material for GoMath, and the teachers are using them and evaluating them, reflecting on what they're doing. Next year, I hope to continue having the teachers at the Conquer Math program and this time focus on literacy in math and also differentiation. At the middle school, we have, we're rolling out the Connected Math Program, CMP3, and we're doing it only in grade six. This was a research-based decision, we, I communicated with lots of districts in the area, I took a small team to Bloomfield Middle School and we observed a half day full of classes, and we also went to some PD sessions at Conquer Math in which Nancy Schultz specifies and gears the entire session only for Connected Math. So let's dive into Connected Math, literally. It's an investigations-based program. Students are discovering and investigate, investigating and playing and gathering data themselves, and they are the ones who are coming up with the ideas. The teachers take a backseat. In general, it's very hard for teachers to, to take a backseat. Coming from a math nerd and a history nerd could, could probably agree with me, when you're passionate about what you, what you do, all you want to do is talk about it. And this is where teachers need to back away a little bit, and like I said before, let the students drive the conversation and discover. There's a high level in student, of student engagement, sixth grade teachers, Colleen, Cecier, and Jess Johnson are, are taken back every time they run these types of lessons because of the amount of input that the students actually bring to the table. And that's the main goal, they, they are accountable, they are held accountable to rationalize and verbalize everything that they're doing. And everything I just described is exactly what we're looking for in the science classroom, again, and I will refer to that when we, when I mention a little bit about science. So it's really, really very successful so far in grade six. Over the next two years, the, the grade seven and eight teachers are going to be brought on board as, like I said, the, the K-5 students who have this new experience in math and science are coming up through the ranks. In terms of assessment technology, besides MobiMax, the teachers at the middle school are really using very often Kahoots and also Plicker Cards, which are individual and group assessment technology. At the high school, we are pushing for an increase in manipulatives. At some point, and this is something I discovered over the last couple of years, at some point, we stop playing, we stop using manipulatives and games because we have this expectation that high school students and even middle school students are expected to sit in rows and, and learn from the teacher, and that teacher's going to pour the information in. There needs to be more discovery at the high school level, there needs to be more drawing, more visual examples. So this is a conversation that's been ongoing at the high school, with the high school teachers. With that, we've had a focus on curriculum, building connections between the, the subject areas, Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. Over the last year, we really worked on rearranging the order and the presentation of material. When you get a textbook, teachers are usually bound to, well, it, it's chapter one, so I'm going to teach chapter one first and then chapter two. And what we've done is we've merged chapters, we've rearranged the order so that there's really more emphasis on quality over quantity, and we're very excited about that. Over the next two years, we are hoping to look for, to adopt a new program that fits the philosophies that we're developing. Along the way, I have updated the high school teachers on every single move we are making at the elementary and the middle school so that they really get a good sense of the new expectations that we have for math and science students. In terms of instructional technology, Geometer Sketchpad, some different computer science software, and I know we're looking more into computer science for next year, and assessment platforms, including the Plicker Cards. Now that is the math in a nutshell, there's been a lot that's happening, and to squeeze it into 10 minutes is very challenging, but we're going to, once again, literally dive into science and give you a brief overview of the next generation science standards that are here for grades six to 12 and will be coming into place in grades K through five. So just as a quick example, the next generi, next generation science standards, NGSS, has a few components to it, and when the teachers and I first were exposed to this, we were just kind of like, wow, there's a lot, lot going on here. You have your content, your list, your meat and potatoes of the science standards, what is it that you're teaching? And that's in orange. In blue, you have your science and engineering practices, it's the how-to, not far off from the math practices, it's focusing on process. How are students collecting data? How are they investigating? How are they analyzing? And they pair well with the performance expectations. It's no longer list the, the five, the phylms, all right? List the bones of the body, list this, explain this, it's design and experiment to evaluate this, it's just a whole new direction. And then cross-cutting concepts are ongoing patterns that students can transfer and carry over from one grade to the next. That's the science standards in a nutshell. NGSS would like teachers to implement the Five E Model, not unlike the philosophy I mentioned earlier with math. We want students to be engaged in something, the little soda example for one, you had no idea what was coming, you didn't know what I was going to ask you, you were kind of like, hmm, what is this, right? You're going to engage, you're going to explore, explain, it's not until elaborate that the teacher actually comes in and provides his or her own knowledge and information, and then evaluate, and the cycle starts all over again. What we are doing in Cedar Grove is right now, we have ongoing curriculum workshops and professional development for the middle school and high school teachers to better plan their lessons accordingly to meet the Five E Model. We are working with a consultant to create a curriculum map. We have started on rolling, rolling out a program in grade six to have an integrated middle school program, which is something that was highly suggested by the state, and they have found success nationwide with having integrated. So instead of students having earth science, life science, physical science, we are mixing it up for each grade so that they better see the connections between the three sciences as well. K-5, within two weeks, I'm meeting with a textbook committee, we are looking again at samples and resources, and I have pulled in a lot of literacy supplements and books to help teachers in K-5 with engineering design and just opportunities to have activities in classes that really combine literacy, math, and science. And with some of the, with some changes with the, the calendar this fall, we will be pushing engineering tomorrow in, for fall next year, but that is a program that is sponsored by GE. It is something where Cedar Grove is going to host, could be 10 to 12 schools, and 20 or more GE professionals who are actual engineers in the field are going to lead and run activities and experiments for the students. I took a team there to an engineering, engineering tomorrow program last year, and it was just amazing, so I'm excited for the opportunity for Cedar Grove to host this. So that is what we're doing in math and science in Cedar Grove, I'm very, very excited about it, and I will certainly miss my opportunity to continue my conversations with all of the teachers I work with as, as I go out. But I think we're, we're moving in a really great direction, so thank you for your attention. I didn't expect you guys to stay that long, actually. Are there any questions? I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
That was awesome.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Great information. No, it's funny that you even brought up about starting instead of chapter one because my daughter and her friends, that was like a lot of the conversation when they first started school, that in math, they started on chapter six, I think. And they were like, what do we do when starting on chapter six? And I couldn't answer that question, now I can by your presentation. And, no, it's pretty, pretty interesting that we're doing that.
It's hard for teachers to, I feel like myself and the other principals have had to say, we give you permission to use your discretion and your knowledge and experience to say, no, I really believe chapter six needs to go first, and I really, there's, there's a million reasons, you know, and we, that we talked about at, at all the grade levels, because all the grade levels are doing it at this point, at least.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. Really?
Yes.
There's a rationale behind all of the changes we've made.
But you're giving them the faculty the ability to do that, which is a big deal, be able to start at chapter six, even if you want it or whatever they think is appropriate.
There isn't a perfect textbook at, at any level, and it takes, it takes some, some encouragement, it takes some risks, you know, on part of the teacher and the administrators to say, it's okay, we want you to try this. Because any teacher that has ever tried to start at chapter one and get through every section to chapter 12, it does not happen.
Ever?
No.
Even in our school, it doesn't happen.
A lot of the heavier and meatier substantial topics sometimes fall at the end of the book, so the teachers get rushed, and even with PAR, PAR is one test, but, but there are, there's material in PAR that is at the very, very end of the year, and that is one of the factors, one of the many other factors, K-12, that we've rearranged some things, but students get complacent in the beginning of the year when they know it's a review, and then they don't have that challenge where they need, they need a little bit of wiggle on the beginning of the year, so.
And then they checked out by the end of the year, when you get to the important stuff.
Yeah.
So it's pretty cool. Yeah.
That's great.
No, it's awesome.
Thank you.
That was a great presentation, thank you.
From the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1 through B4? We'll start over, that's okay. From the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1 through B4? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of October 18th, 2016. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of October 2016. B3 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of September 2016. And B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of such code, and further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Beruovich?
Yes.
Mr. Schoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B5?
So.
Second.
And B5 is a motion to pay the listed bills as of November 16th, that was in our packet. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Beruovich?
Yes.
Mr. Schoner?
Sum up standing for B5.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B6 through B14?
So.
Second.
B6 is a motion to accept eight Vetrolin inhalers donated by the medicine shop. B7 is a motion to approve the third quarter 2016 unemployment tax payment. B8 is a motion to approve the following for submission of the comprehensive maintenance plan for the 2016, 2017 school year. Is it necessary to read that? Okay, just a little checking. B9 is a motion to approve MLINK's payment application number eight in the amount listed therein. It's been reviewed and approved by our architect. B10 is a motion to approve the Brahma Construction Payment, application number six, for work down at North End and South End Schools, the payment has been approved by our architect. B11 is a motion to approve Brahma Construction Corp. Change Order Number Seven in the amount listed therein. B12 is a motion to rescind Resolution B14 from the August 30th, 2016 board meeting and retroactively approve two proposals by AHTA consultants to provide asbestos consulting services at South End as well as North End in the amount listed. B13 is a motion to approve a proposal from East Coast Interior in the amount listed to furnish and install carpet tiles, VCT, wall base, and skim coating at North End School. And B14 is a motion to accept a gift from the Cedar Grove High School APT Beautification Committee of the gold and black lettering for the outside wall sign that will read Cedar Grove High School. It's very exciting. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Beruovich?
Yes.
Mr. Schoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes. From the office of the Superintendent of the Schools, I believe Mr. Fotherman has a report to share with us.
I do. Thank you.
All fancy technical.
Short and sweet, just to pull out some highlights.
I can't wait to see pictures. I have no idea.
As the board member knows, I'm in Michael. Once a month, our educators, our team, K-12 puts together, it's not an exhaustive list, but a snapshot of what's been going on the past 30 days. They forward that good stuff to our administrative team, who then sort of picks through that, gathers those highlights, and sends that to me, where I then go through that and put together your monthly report. What you'll see now is just a very brief sort of highlight reel of what we have here. Each of these reports are posted on our website, please check them out, you know, they range from 10 to all 15 pages long, chock full of good stuff. A few highlights here. What you'll see moving forward is that these presentations that I do are aligned to the district's goals, the board's goals, and so, starting with student achievement, let's talk just about a few highlights. Again, this stuff is listed in the monthly report that is available to you both here and will be tomorrow on our website. Let's just talk a little bit about what's going on at Cedar Grove High School. There's a lot of talk about how much assessment there is that goes on, so we have to pick and choose, make oxygen choices, if you will, as to which assessments that we insist upon exposing our students to. The PSAT is one of those exceptions. Look, let's, let's not forget that we are a college and career preparatory organization, so most of our kids, bottom line, go to college, so we've got to get them ready to take that SAT. And to do that, research shows us, they should take the PSAT. So this board, our administrative team, has been committed over the last few years, in particularly this year, to having our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders take the PSAT. And here are some of the numbers. Nearly all of them are doing that, and this will help them, will serve them well when they sit for the official SAT down the road. I mean, talking 99% of our freshmen, nearly the same for our sophomores and our juniors. Good stuff. What's going on at the middle school? Well, we've talked a lot about, you've heard Mrs. Barbosa exhaustively speak about math, language arts, science. Well, let's talk a little bit about some of the, the fringe benefits of going to school in our district. What about the makers club here at the middle school? We talked a bit about this in our last report, there's such good things going on with our 3D printing, the design teams, what they're working on, their work with the drone, we hope to show you a video, do we have that video tonight, Joe, our drone videos? We'll show you a drone video of our referendum project that we have for you, and our tech club as well, so there's good stuff going on in every corner of your school district. We're excited to bring that to you. How about our STEAM program? We've been talking about this, we've been promising it, well, now we're delivering. It started recently- It started recently at South End School on Monday evenings for an hour and a half. Uh, it's a pay-to-play type of operation for now, but our students are so thrilled to be taking part in our STEAM program. That's science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Every chance we get, we need to talk about STEAM programming, getting our kids ready for both college and career. So we're excited, hopefully you'll get your students signed up as well. Let's talk briefly about community outreach. As you know, we had our first coffee talk last month, right here in this building. Thank you to Mrs. Dye for attending with me for the inaugural coffee talk. It was great. People showed up, they ate our cookies, they drank our tea, it was wonderful, and coffee. What are some of the things we talked about? Well, no surprise, the STEAM program, uh, the crossing guard distribution, which is always a topic of concern, student safety is our number one priority. Referendum, surprise, surprise, that came up. The relocation plan for getting our students back to North End School, and so on. So a great big thank you to those that were in attendance. We hope to see you at the November 30th coffee talk. It's coming down the road, we'll send an email reminder out to you. Here it is. That's at 7:00 AM, by the way, so we'll be at the high school 7 o'clock in the morning. We're trying to do them in PM and AM, sort of rotating shifts. We know we all have competing priorities in the evening, and so, uh, half of our sessions will be in the morning. Hope to see you there. We do, actually, and, uh, we may actually have to change that, given, uh, some of the district priorities that we have, but we'll get a message after. What I wanted to do now is just take a brief pause and, and share something with you. We're all by now familiar with the Cedar Grove Waves Project, and I recently came in possession of this video. That sort of provides an overview of the effort that it takes to put this together. And I couldn't help but be selfish and say, I need to share this with the public during I think the images speak for themselves, but I certainly want to point out a couple of folks in the room. Mr. Perrinote, thank you so much for putting that together for us.
Yes.
And certainly, you know, I'm always reminded of what it takes to, to run a district and to never forget things like this. And it takes community. And so, Mr. Schoner, I think exemplifies that, and so, thank you. Mr. Schoner, you have a follow-up for us?
As I do, um, the National 9/11 Museum and Memorial has, um, requested, what they're doing is they're putting together a national registry now of all, uh, annual exhibits that commemorate 9/11, that aren't made permanent installations. So we requested to be one of their main, uh, beginning, uh, as they put this installation together, all the, the annual ones, so they've asked us for that, and I've given them permission to do that, so they're going to be, so when you research us, um, over at the National 9/11 Museum, we'll be a part of it, that it's an annual event. So I was totally honored, very pleased. Perry did a fantastic job with the video, just let him run with it, and he did a great job. And, and also, I want to steal, we have the Boy Scouts, the old school council, we had just general children in town, parents in town, schoolteachers, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Angeli, everyone really came and really made it happen, because it's, it's a big effort. And also everyone that made the donations, too, because it is, uh, it does, you can't get the stuff for free. But it was, it really worked out well.
Well, thank you. Efforts like this, we shall not forget.
Thank you.
A few more slides, and we'll get you going here. Just wanted to touch briefly on a referendum update. As you know from our website and the information we're pushing out, and from our board meetings, that construction meetings continue, they've continued through October and November. Significant progress is being made at both the North End and the high school. South End, as you've probably heard, is pretty much done outside of a few punch list items. Let's just take a quick look at a few things. This is North End School, we've tied up all of the electrical issues that we've had, and that's the new greeting for the drop ceilings in the hallway. We'll also have new lighting that will go in there as well. We thought about leaving those kind of crooked hanging lights in there, just didn't seem to fit the new motif. We've been talking a lot about bathrooms, 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 but the North End bathrooms are just about done. Here's just a couple of quick pictures of that, they look fantastic, they're just brilliantly new, and the color patterns that were chosen, these pictures don't do them justice, they just look fantastic. Here's one of the gang bathrooms, I mean, they're still wrapped in plastic and shiny new. Good stuff. But more importantly, they're nearly done. Quick look at the Cedar Grove High School auditorium, which is also nearly done, work in progress, but we're getting there. Couple of pictures of, of that, that's from the stage looking out. What I wanted to do in closing is show you just a very couple of short, uh, images captured by our Memorial Middle School Makerspace Drone Club, if you will. Spoiler alert, you're first going to see the auditorium. And this is, uh, our drone in flight, piloted by none other than Jerry Lugamino. He is our FCC sanctioned district pilot. And there's our new auditorium, it looks fantastic from any angle, certainly from the drones. We have new seats in place, new flooring, the air conditioning is ready to roll. We still need our sound paneling to be completed in the back, we're waiting on that, and there's our, our pilot there. Thought you'd appreciate just a quick bird's eye view of where we are, and one other one, the field complex, a little bit longer, video. Here you get the drone taking off, how cool is that? This is from the parking lot area, if you haven't gathered by now, and up we go. This was actually taken yesterday, so it was a busy day on the worksite, actually lots of things going on. There's our new concession stand, of course, our field track. New sod is nearly in place for the baseball field, bleachers. You may have heard of me say this once or twice before, it's gonna be great. A couple, a few times. For someone who doesn't live in town, I couldn't help but marvel at just how beautiful the community looks from, from up above, just a beautiful community we have here. So the drone just kind of hovers around and makes a couple of turns, I just thought you'd appreciate a different look at things. You can see there, the baseball sod is just about done there. It's a nice view of our parking lot, you can see the curbing is in place now, wrapping around. I know I get excited about small things like curbing, but hey, the curbing's in place, that's exciting. We're getting there. Obviously, this is the, the new parking area, this was grassy knoll before, this is all new parking area that will be adjacent to the new concession stand. This drone's going to come back around and basically land right where it was before. The drone has a neat feature, where actually, it's programmed to land where it took off from, I mean, how cool is that? Just push the button, it literally turn, returns using GPS technology to where it took off. It's a safety feature, so, you know, it's a lot easier to land the drone than it had been before. How cool is that? Beautiful wall that they had built here, retaining wall, this is going to be the throw area for track. This, of course, is going to be filled in with sod, we'll have our, our screen here to protect the track from homerun balls. Of course, hopefully, we'll be hitting many of those. Clay infield, I mean, the infield looks fantastic, completely resurfaced. Some of this area will be not sodded, it'll be seeded, this just, this small area out here will be seeded for the spring. And now our drone is returning back. That really wraps it up, so, again, thank you.
Thank you. It's gonna be great.
It's gonna be great.
Absolutely. All right, moving. Moving along, and from the office of the superintendent, superintendent of schools, can I have a motion for S1 through S3?
So moved second.
S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to approve the submission of the 2016-2017 Statement of Assurance to the New Jersey Department of Education. And S3 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from October 18th, 2016. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under personnel, can I have a motion for, let's go big, S4 through S20?
Wow. So moved.
912, so, S4 is a motion to approve Stephanie Hiows, um, South End 3rd grade maternity leave teacher, um, at the rate list therein, retroactive to October 24th. S5 is a motion to approve the corrected salary for Nancy Solucci, um, North End math leave replacement teacher. S6 is a motion to accept the resignation of Anne Altimora, North End paraprofessional. S7 is a motion to retroactively accept the resignation of Kenneth Smertz, um, South End part-time custodian. S8 is a motion to retroactively approve Kenneth Smertz, district substitute custodian. S9 is a motion to approve Perrinote, South End part-time custodian. S10 is a motion to retroactively approve Dana Buchalski as a one-on-one, um, before-school aide at MMS. S11 is a motion to rescind Joe Morabito, tech crew advisor, retroactive to September. S12 is a motion to approve the following stipends for the winter coaching positions for the 2016-2017 school year. S13 is a motion to approve the following co-curricular activities for the 2016-2017 school year. S14 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S15 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S16 is a motion to approve the following substitute teacher for the 16, 200, I'm sorry, 16-17 school year. S17 is a motion to retroactively approve Stephanie Basso, North End lunch duty stipend. S18 is a motion to approve, or I'm sorry, to authorize attendance at the following events, there's a lot of events. S19 is a motion to approve the following sick leave of absence. And S20 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observations. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S21 and S22?
So moved.
Second.
S21 is a motion to approve the following curricula that has been revised slash aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And S22 is a motion to approve the following staff for curriculum writing. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S23?
So moved.
Second.
S23 is a motion to approve the following contracts for the 16-17 school year for special education students. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Perulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. The meeting is open to the power for comments on items on or off the agenda. Yes. Do we have a microphone somewhere? Oh, okay.
Jennifer Rosania, 17, Wilder Trail Building.
Hi, can I see you up just to stand there for the cam? Thank you.
Um, I came this evening, I would like to speak to the board about the January 2nd holiday returning to school. Okay? I wasn't sure if I was able to do that at this meeting. Before I do that, I just want to identify myself that I'm Secretary in the School District, President, Lead, and Straight Secretary to the Athletic Director. I worked, my 26th year, I worked various positions as a secretary. And I was also the President of the Cedar Grove Educational Secretaries Association, and Chief Negotiator for 12 years. Just to make things a little easier.
Thank you.
I'd just like to give a little clarification too on 12-month secretaries. Even the 12-month employees, they seem to be the ones that are being affected by the schools being open on January 2nd. A 12-month secretary is contracted to work 240 days, getting 24 paychecks. Going through the calendar and taking it off our district calendar, on the first page you could see the different months, the number of days a 12-month secretary works. At the end of the year, that comes out to 247 days. We're contracted to work 240. On the 10-month side, it's 200 days, based on 20-day periods. At the end of the year, it comes out to 195 days. On the second page, I did a survey of, I believe it was 16 different school districts, January 2nd being closed, the number of holidays given, whether a school district gives a 12-month employee Christmas break and spring break. So it gives the number of days that holidays are given off for 12-month employees. I probably went a little bit ahead of myself, but I heard that we were not going to be compensated in any way because we receive 16 days. I think it is this year pending, it could be 15 days. 15 days, and that's supposed to satisfy January 2nd of us coming back into school. I believe it was negotiated that if school began on January 2nd giving up the holiday of January 1st, that teachers could leave instead of coming in, coming back to school on June 26th, they can leave on June 23rd, which is fine, you know. I'm a team player, and whatever's gonna work best for the school district, that's great, but 12-month people, secretaries, as well as administrators, custodians, the 12-month people are not being compensated in any way or honored, you know, for having that day off. That is contractual. I do have, and here also in the packet, the contract language states all 12-month secretaries shall be entitled to 13 paid holidays as per contract year as established by the Board. It's an event, in the event any holiday falls within the secretary's scheduled vacation time, an equivalent day will be granted. Should a secretary be required to work on a scheduled holiday, an equivalent day will be granted. Also in the packet, I did some research on the holidays. I don't, you know, I won't go through that, waste everybody's time on it. But January 1st is a federal holiday. It gives a list of the holidays that are federal, which usually federal, state, state usually follows. So I guess the point is, is that we're not being compensated for it. And I was wondering if, in any way, or why we worry for, if there's something down the pipe that we will be compensated for having that day.
I don't know if I'm following. Could you give it to me in layman's, are you?
Right, because I just know that this was already negotiated between the union and the Board, right? So maybe you can kind of help us?
Well, Mrs. Rosania and I have discussed this, and the questions that you're raising are those that need to be raised during the negotiations process. And your bargaining unit had the opportunity to do that. In fact, some questions along these lines were raised, they were discussed, addressed. Decisions were made specific to the district calendar. And one statement in the contract in terms of scheduling a day that's a holiday and an equivalent day. How many days do the 12-month secretaries get off this year?
There's possibly, there's 15.
15. And how many, how many does the contract say that they're required to get?
It says entitled to.
Right. So we've talked this through negotiations with the CGA, with your bargaining unit, very amicably. And decisions were made to, as the Board knows, approve the district calendar. Jen, with all those things having been discussed, the decisions were made to present this district calendar forward back in March.
But this is, it's a federal, national holiday that contracts specifically states and the other paperwork from the, from the state and national says that when an employee works on a holiday, if the holiday falls on a Friday, Saturday, I'm sorry, Friday is given. If the holiday falls on a Monday.
Right, the contract.
The Monday is given.
You're right, but you were, you were compensated two equivalent days, not one as per the contract, but two.
What, the two days?
The contract says you shall get 13. In fact, this calendar gives you 15. That's not one, but two equivalent days based on it. So again, we've been through this with your bargaining unit.
Not equivalent days, what, what, what are the two days?
Well, whichever two days that constitute the 15 versus the 13. So pick one. Those are equivalent days.
That's what you can't do. You can't.
Well, we can do that. We've talked about doing that, and it was agreed upon.
Two of the days that I know that are in the, matter of fact, there is a copy of our, our calendar here. Rosh Hashanah was a day that was given, Yom Kippur was a day that was given. You cannot exclude 10-month people from getting that. You cannot penalize us because of a day that's given for everyone. It's a day that's observed for everyone. That's why the contract says entitled to. If the Board decides to adopt other days that could better consider, like, kind of like a federal holiday, or it could be Columbus Day or whatever, you can't profile and say, well, it's only for 10-month employees, or it's only for people with brown hair, or it's only for a Catholic person or a Jewish person. The whole population has to get that holiday also. It can't be profiled against. That's why the contract says entitled to. You could give us 20, and as you can see with the chart that I put, with the research that I did in contacting other schools, and matter of fact, there aren't, I did attach calendars too, to it. Every school is getting the minimum number of days, basically, is a 19 to 20 day. There was another school district that's given, Newark gives 17 days.
Jen, again, I don't mean to interrupt.
No.
The data is great, but all of these issues that you're raising
Right.
shall be addressed through the bargaining process, not through this process or any other. You know that. You've been the chair for your bargaining unit for years. And you know full well when these concerns are addressed and the process by which to do that. You know that. And you know that we know that.
Okay, so when you're saying that, that means that I would have to go to my association, or was this supposed to be done prior?
What do you think?
I have a question. Isn't our district calendar, before we as a Board approve this? I don't know the answer to this, so I'm just asking. Is that something that you review with the, with like Chris Cannella, for example?
Absolutely.
You come to an agreement, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so then, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but what Mr. Featherman is, in my opinion, I agree with. This is bargaining, you know, we do this through negotiations. This is the first time I've ever had a presentation like this in the 11 years that I'm doing this. And, you know, if that, this was the first time that it was even, like, I was kind of surprised. I didn't even know what you were going to discuss. And normally, if there's an issue, your representatives normally make, you know, noise about it. And, you know, I, I'm feeling that they, they know the answer to this, as Mr. Featherman is saying, that if you do have a valid point, and again, it's a little bit over my head right now, but I'm saying if you do have a valid point, that is something that I think they would bring to the table in their next negotiations, which we started, as I said yesterday, so.
But then when is the next time that a holiday will fall on a Saturday or Sunday, a federal holiday?
Well, that's still language that they could put in the contract, even though it might not, you know, in the, in the terms of the contract that's going to be negotiated.
But that's why, not to interrupt you, but that's why this contract was the goal. It states right in here, if a secretary has to work on, on holiday, and I don't know what other 12-month employees, I'm just gonna go by them. Because I really think it affects all 12-month.
So speak down to our level, so we understand.
Well, but I, wait.
Maybe that's why we may not understand, so if you bring it to our level.
I just have a question. Just, I know she's citing page, number eight on page seven, so I just wanted just clarification. Where it said, should a secretary be required to work on a scheduled holiday? I think the issue, though, is this isn't a scheduled holiday on our calendar. Is that correct? So, so the example would be if, like, let's say we head off for Columbus Day, which I know we don't, I'm just throwing it out there, and we ask people to come in and work that. That's what this means, right?
You would give them a day.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand what the wording means.
So, so, so if the districts have days off on the calendar.
A scheduled day off, yes.
And you have staff coming in, they're going to get another day off for coming in that day?
If we were to invite them in.
If we needed them, right, if they came to an agreement, right, right. But that's what that is referring to, is a scheduled holiday, not like what might be recognized as a federal holiday. I mean, there's lots of holidays, and we don't necessarily get them off, or we do, or we don't, right? And as a district, you work that out and decide with the union, right? Okay.
So what you're saying, if I understand correctly, is that if the holiday fell on a Friday, and well, no, I don't.
Here's the bottom line. Let me simplify this for you. In theory, January 2nd is a holiday. Our, it's a federal holiday.
If it's the first, it's on the Sunday.
Our district calendar does approve way forward.
Now I get it.
Does not have that as a federal holiday.
As an holiday.
As a holiday, I'm sorry. So that's where the difference is. So as much as I respect what you're saying, I also have to agree with Mr. Featherman and what Mr. Mandala's saying. Yes, I understand you have to work on a federal holiday, but the entire district is working on that day. So it's not just.
The district is being compensated for that day. That's the problem. All 10-month employees are being compensated. They're saying, you're gonna come in on January 2nd so that we can leave school on January 23rd rather than the 26th.
And I understand what you're saying. I also understand that we can't go ahead on January 7th or 4th and.
But isn't everybody getting compensated on January 2nd? Because everybody's going back to work on January 2nd, right? I, I'm missing something then. Right? Everybody's getting, you're going to work? I don't know. I'm burning Mr. Featherman. I'm gonna be perfectly honest. Okay.
And I think the one, and I don't mean to answer anybody. The part of the issue here is we have other people that we have to listen to and be advised about. So maybe the better way to do this is for you to speak to your advisors, have them speak to Mr. Featherman, and then maybe we can pick this up in the next meeting, or have a better answer for you.
But not to interrupt, where I am just saying, I wish we would have had this discussion when we did our calendar. And that's why I asked the question, if it was discussed with your representatives, and I'm being told it was. So then I can't see where the fault lies on the administration or the Board, because we have two or three readings on our calendar that we review. And I'm just saying that we definitely would have been open to listen at that time if it was brought to our attention. But obviously, your leaders, that for your, your bargaining unit felt that it was okay, they chose the Monday to get, I mean, instead of coming back to school Monday to 26th, they were okay with getting out on the 23rd.
Because they, that's what they wanted.
But I think that's who you need to.
They did not contact the entire population.
I understand that, but you pay them, or you vote them in to represent you, just like we're representatives of the whole community. That's what you're, you chose those representatives. I think that's where your issue lies. Just as when we make decisions, we hear it from the community when they don't agree with us. So, I mean, I totally understand what you're saying. And like I said, I would have been open to the discussion if it was brought to our attention at the time when we were voting on the calendar, so.
Well, two things happened. First of all, I went to the President of the CGA, because again, this was done without the approval. Like I said, you're, you're Board of Education, you're here to represent the town taxpayers. You're also here to represent, you're my employer, you sign my paycheck, you're here to represent us too. You hired us, so you have, there's some type of communication respect that you have to protect us too. So first of all, I went to the Union President about it, and I was told that I'm not to speak to him. He doesn't want to, he doesn't need, he doesn't have to speak to me. For me not to speak to him. He doesn't like the fact of me rouse, rouse, rousing other secretaries and giving misinformation. He's stopping me from my right of speech, stopping me from my right to ask anyone who's a 12-month employee their opinion on the calendar.
Sorry, so the secretaries have some collective bargaining for them, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they.
That's the same, okay. They have, they have, you know, a union leader or.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
That represents them.
Are you, are you a member of the Association?
No, I'm not. And that was my second point. And I'm not a member of the Association because of typical things like this. The last, last contract, the 12-month secretaries were given less of a percent than the 10-month secretaries. And this is what I'm saying, there's a lack of respect here. And to me, it's like, this is, to me, it's underhand in this. I, you know, I, I want to say the correct words and that. I'm not, you know, I, I respect all the teachers. I'm not saying that the teachers shouldn't have a day off. We have the greatest teachers in the world, but we also have the greatest 12-month employees in the world and the greatest secretaries. And this contract language, it's not even subject to interpretation. This was put here for this reason. In the past, I've worked under three, wait, let me just get, three other superintendents besides Mr. Featherman. I was chief negotiator for 12 years. The Secretaries Association, nor the Teachers Association, ever had input into the calendar. It was always done by the Cedar Grove Board of Education. They're the ones who determine the days that we're gonna be off. For respect to the associations, the superintendent would come back to their presidents and say, then these are the days that we chose. Is this okay with your association? Are we meeting the contract needs? We never had input to tell anyone what day that we were gonna take off. That's up to the Board of Education, because they have to consider the population and the demographics of the. the demographics of the town to see what days are going to appropriately be observed. And days like Christmas Day and Thanksgiving Day and it's in there, Good Friday, that's why they have these standard federal holidays that whether it's a school district and I, and I do have Thanksgiving, I do have on the, on separate, on school district also, that those days are to be honored.
I, I totally hear what you're saying. What, where I'm missing, to be honest with you, is you just said that the superintendents that everyone you worked with share the calendar with the leaders in the association, whoever's in charge on the association side. I believe, especially with our current superintendent, if there was any discrepancy or if there was a, an issue and they brought it to Mr. Featherman's attention, I'm sure knowing Mr. Featherman.
Oh, I'm not.
He would have brought that to the table and I, just knowing his personality and how he deals with the staff.
But there was not a 12-month employee there representing.
No, this is, this is what I'm, I get it. I hear everything you're saying. However, I think that the people you're, I mean, it's great that you brought this to our attention and, and again, we're in negotiations to here, but I think the people that you should be having this discussion with, with your frustration is your, your.
Representatives?
Yeah, your representatives.
I have the representation.
I was just going to say that. However, just learning now that you're not in a bargaining unit, again, that is out of our control whether they're going to listen to you or represent you. That's, that's your representation, just like our, the community is our, our constituents and who we listen to. And if we didn't listen and they get frustrated with us, it's not that we would, that's in turn, we now go to your representation and we give, say what you're saying to us. If the community is, is giving us a hard time for decisions we make that really have nothing to do with your leadership, but yet we go to your leadership and we give them a hard time for something that they're not doing, that's what I feel you're doing here to us. You're making us make decisions that have nothing really to do with us.
Yes, because you are, you, you make the contract.
No, they agreed to that contract. Your representation.
Okay.
So whether they didn't, if, if they didn't feel that it was right, they shouldn't agree to that. And again, if it was something that was, something that's not in the norm, that it was out of the ordinary this year, if they had brought it to our attention, like I said, when we did the calendar, I think we would have had this discussion and, and talked, you know, but right now, I feel like there's really nothing we can do because everything is agreed upon.
If somebody's underhandingly doing something, how could you do that? That's why I say I'm not part of the association.
But who's doing the under, you saying we are?
No, 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 I'm not.
Oh.
No, not you. I'm saying the association because now this is the second time with the association that something has happened with the 12-month secretary. Maybe two, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Did, as, did the board, is the board asking for everyone to come back into school on January 2nd or is the association asking the board?
No, I think, I think what it was was that we did the calendar.
The board and association.
But we brought it up.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure we did. I'm sure it was a superintendent that made the calendar and we discussed it and then he brought it back to the other side.
Based on, based on holidays, based on.
180 days, right.
Based on 180 days, based on having graduation at the end of the week.
Right.
Not at the beginning of the week. All of those are the parameters that make us kind of fit.
And my understanding, to be honest, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Featherman, it's my understanding that it was the association side that wanted to be out of school on the Friday and not have to come back on the Monday.
Right.
So it was really accommodations based on their.
That's what I mean. That's, this, that's what I'm saying.
So.
So they were compensated. What makes them different from a 12-month employee that already works.
I'm not saying that it makes it different, but that's your leadership. That's who you should be bringing that up with.
Their leadership does not want to talk to me. Being that I am not part of the association, I have to come to the board because if I, if I just came into this district and just started working, my first day of work, you're going to hand me a contract and you're going to say, this is the contract that you need to follow. So you are the person that's protecting me. You're saying to me, even as, whether I'm in the association or not in the association, by you going, doing the contract and signing the contract, you're saying to me, this is what I'm giving to you. This is how I'm protecting you. So I have to entrust in the decision-making that you made for this contract. That supersedes anything that anyone else is trying to do or manipulate. That's the reason why we have a contract.
Sure. Jen, we, we think that there's nothing so far as I'm interpreting and the CGA leadership's interpreting, there is no violation of your contract based on the decisions that were made.
We have to come into work.
Simply there is no violation.
It clearly states that if a secretary has, if a day falls on the Monday and this and that, and we have to come into work.
No, it doesn't state that in the contract.
What I, what I will do, what I'm open to do, and I don't know if it's been done already, it might have been done already, I have no problem having our attorney interpret this and advise us on what we would do. I, I don't, that might have been done already, but I'm open to that. So, so what you're asking then is if it was, then you're saying that everyone or just the secretaries are entitled to another day?
My contract says, and the state, the paperwork that I gave you, really by the state, the state does cover that. Sure does. Again, it's on page seven, section eight, in the event a holiday falls within secretary's scheduled vacation time, an equivalent day will be granted. Should a secretary be required to work on a scheduled holiday, an equivalent day will be granted.
But that's contractual.
Right, and I think that's.
But that's a scheduled holiday.
Well, that's, right, it's not a.
A scheduled holiday, right.
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 It's not, it's not a scheduled holiday in the district.
We're not asking you to do that.
We're not asking you to come in on a day that everybody else is off. The district.
In the district.
Is considering this and not to be a holiday. In return.
It's a federal holiday.
Right, but there are lots of other federal holidays that we might not take advantage of because we can't, we're trying to get in days, we make decisions, and so the decision was made that, you know, that might be a federal holiday, but we were going back to school on the 2nd. So for the district, it's not a scheduled holiday. So I mean, I have no problem asking if our attorney will look into it just to ensure that there isn't a violation.
I'm trying to make, explain myself, right? And the paperwork that's there is a backup.
Another example, Jen. Martin Luther King Day is a federal holiday. Martin Luther King Day is a federal holiday. Is the district open?
No.
Is our school district open?
We are.
We are. We are. Right, so it's a federal holiday.
People chose to do that, but if, but if.
We chose to do that on a second.
You decided if you don't have to take that as a federal holiday, it's in the paperwork that I distributed. I didn't want to read through it step by step. But if you decided to, to take Martin Luther King as a day off in the school district, were you only going to give it to 10-month employees or 12-month employees too?
Everybody.
Everybody, right.
So this is how, this is what happens when it goes over the 13 days. And that's why the chart's in there for all the other school districts.
And again, and I don't mean construction of projects, but we're getting to a point where we're just.
Right, so, so in the interest of everyone, let's, we will have our attorney just look to make sure that there wasn't a violation of the contract and then Mr. Featherman will get back to you.
And all it's asking is, is what day are you going to get in, get in lieu with it? If, if you're stating that.
And I honestly don't think that there will be a day in lieu of anything.
There's going to be.
Right, right. But I think just in the interest of, we've been at this for 30 minutes.
But two, what two days? See, this is the thing. What two days will begin?
All right, we're just going to go around.
And I, again, I think this may be.
There should be a sidebar agreement to that. If you're saying, just like you and the teachers.
Right. And I think we're getting in a territory with sidebar agreements that we are in no position to really, right. But we will have our attorney.
There's two things going on here. I think that there may be things that need to be addressed during negotiations that you might have to bring to your leadership, to bring to the table. That's a separate conversation that has nothing to do with this. I think what we're agreeing on, and I just want to make sure you're okay with that, or if this will satisfy you with the answer, we come back with one way or the other, we're agreeing to asking our attorney to interpret the language of the current contract that's in place and falls into your question with the federal holiday falling, where they're giving it on the 2nd and we're not. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay. So we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any comments or anything they'd like to come up with?
Mike, did you get a copy of this?
He did.
Okay. I was going to say you can have Tony's.
All right. Closing that portion of the meeting. Future meeting announcements.
Did you want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you, oh, okay. I looked, I looked right at you before I like, you know, banged that gavel. I made sure, I, I gave a pause. There was a pause.
No, I didn't know.
We made some eye contact. All right. Okay, good. I think we're, everybody's done. Future meeting announcements.
Michelle, nothing back there?
She said no. Let's move on.
No, but it's, it scares me that she's here. It's like, what are you doing here?
You know what? We're not happy when people don't show up. Apparently we're not happy when they do. Let's just be happy.
I mean, it's like beautiful.
Future meeting announcements, December 6th here, December 20th here, and December 20th will be Ms. Burke's last meeting.
Oh.
I didn't expect that kind of, all right. Yeah. Okay. So anyway.
This thing was going to be much more.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Smooth.
Second.
There's no discussion, right? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Berhovich.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drummer.
Aye.
Mr. Mendo.
Aye.
Yes. Well, you can't say we don't have fun. Have a good evening, everybody. Meeting's over.